Michael is gonna get me for not turning that microphone on when I speak. Thank you, Michael, for your grace and your mercy. Let the call of the Liberty County Board of Commissioners be in order. Mr. Mosley has the meeting improper appetite?
Yes, sir.
Thank you, sir. I see evidence thereof. Would you be so kind as to lead us in our invocation?
Sure.
God bless.
Let us pray. Gracious and kind Father, we thank you for all your boundless blessings. We thank you for life, health, and strength. And Father, we pause and pray, Father, for the tragic loss of Mary Clarence's daughter. We pray that she would be with that family and strengthen that family this time and this hour. We pray for divine wisdom for this August body. This we thank you for, in Christ's name. Amen.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, time, sir. We're gonna move right on. Someone said earlier today, you can have a shorter dinner and a long meeting. We're gonna try to have a mildly shorter dinner and a mildly short meeting. Everybody participate. Ms. Samantha, will you please come and present?
Mr. Chair, for time considerations, can we allow Mr.?
Who's that?
New tax commissioner come, Mr. Sharp. He has another engagement.
Is he throwing himself at the mercy of the court?
Yes, sir.
Come on, Mr. Sharp. Good to see you, sir. The sharp-looking Sharp.
Appreciate it. Chairman, board, how y'all doing this afternoon? Citizens of Liberty County, y'all good? All right, let's smile. So I'm just here to present just the status of where our tax office has been since I've taken office. I would like to say for all my people who renew their car tags, if you are out of town, we now can renew your tag out of town. So if you are in Savannah, Brinkin, Bloomingdale, Atlanta, you can use that kiosk that we got with a vendor. So now we have access to the kiosk. The next move is to actually get one of those kiosks. And we are in the process of doing that. We're actually just waiting on the completion of Publix. Once Publix is complete, we'll be able to move forward. The demographics team, they'll be able to come down and see if Liberty County is a good place for that kiosk. So y'all pray. Where are my prayer info at?
Y'all here.
Okay, well, I just need, I need to hear y'all pray. All right.
Any particular reason why? The Publix location?
The Publix location, they only operate out of Kroger and Publix.
Oh, really?
And for Liberty County, Kroger, not an ideal location simply because of that, that line of traffic.
We're working on it.
Oh, it's okay. Publix is definitely, and she actually told me that Publix would be the better location seeing where it's located. So that was definitely a good thing. Also, we did have our first tax sale in two years in March. If you weren't aware of it, we had the list initially was about at 130 properties that were in the sale. We got that down to 18. And out of those 18, we sold 13. So we are in the process of actually starting another one. And we will have that at the end of year. All right? Our collection rate for 2023 was 98.8%. Prior to me coming into office, it was about like 93%. But that tax sale and collecting those delinquent taxes boosted that to 98.8%. And the last thing, and this will be real quick. How many of y'all live in the midway to east end of the county? All right, well, that, our, our office, our midway office, we are actually trying to lengthen the hours. But they are open every single day from Monday through Friday. No more of that Wednesday, Thursday, we're not there. We are there every single day to serve you guys. All right? Good?
Ms. Chairman, I have a question.
Yes.
You said you had a tax sale.
Yes, ma'am.
You know how many years that went back? Did you start like in the rear?
Oh, yeah. The, when people are delinquent, I mean, we got taxes going back to 1998. And we are in the process of trying to clear all those taxes up. So if somebody is paying, they pay the back years first, and then it goes up to the current years. So that goes back to, I mean.
So you cleaned up some, let's say from 98 or 2000 or whatever. So but how, you don't know how many more, was that 100 or 32?
130.
130. Was that all those years from, okay.
Yeah. I mean, and a lot of those, the statute of limitations of the last seven years. So a lot of those taxes, we shouldn't even be collecting, and we're working on a way to address that.
Okay, thank you. Good job.
He's gonna come to force with the, is it a resolution?
Yes, August 5th.
That would allow us to clean the slate of those ones that have exceeded the statute of limitations.
Yes, sir.
We look forward to that, sir. Because if you look at our records, it's misleading as to what's still collectible. There's a lot.
Yeah, there's a lot.
It's still on the books, so.
Yeah.
You all remember Commissioner Jones did that one time. You all remember that?
Yeah, so we're working on doing that again.
We look forward to hearing from you, sir.
Good.
Thank you for your update.
All right.
Thank you. Ms. Mosley, can I get a few more digits on that thermometer over there? Just him is a little humid in here.
Oh, no, it's hot.
All right, now let's go to financial. Thank you, Mr. Sharp. Look forward to your coming back, sir. Appreciate what you're doing over there.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners. I'm here to, tonight, to report on the county's May 2025 financial statements. As of the end of May, we have collected approximately, well, not approximately. We have collected all of our budgeted revenues. Some of that is attributable to Mr. Sharp's office for those delinquent taxes that we're not quite sure how to budget for each year.
Oh, he's having a good day today.
Absolutely, yes. For expenditures, we've expended approximately 88%, which is right on track for 11 months into our fiscal year. Currently, the end of May, we have 6.1 months of fund balance in our unreserved, or operation expenses in our unreserved fund balance. This is up just slightly from last May, which we reported 5.1. Looking at the general fund departmental expenditures, variances through May, there are a number that are showing unfavorable variances. However, there are many more that are under budget. And so when we look at the grand total of those, we're running about 2.3 million under budget through the month of May. And that's for a lot of different reasons, but vacancies is probably the primary reason. But as we've, as we've done in prior years, we'll come back after June and make any budget amendments that we need to comply with the Georgia state law for audits. Also, yes, sir.
Before you move on, thank you for, thank you for that. Commissioner, before she moves on, are there any questions? She is saying that we're 2 point, what's that number?
2.384 million.
Under budget. So we, we're not overspending, that's what she's saying.
We're not overspending.
If you have any specific questions of, where she has a little asterisk to the side, you're certainly free to ask any. Or if you need, we can come back to it. But is anything that?
Oh, absolutely.
That comes to mind?
Would that be contributing to the department heads really being real careful in their spending also?
Absolutely. I think a lot of that is attributable to just being conscientious of your spending and no frivolous spending. Yes, in addition to the vacancies that we have as well.
Yeah, Ms. Chairman, I was just wanting to, I know it's, that's almost the end, one month from the year-end.
Yes, ma'am.
This is very good. This is a very good number to be at.
General fund is in a great position for, for May currently, and even going through June, yes.
Okay, I just wanted to see, like, there's several here that are in the red.
Yes, ma'am.
Is that because maybe they're, all of their final billing or something came in or something that we normally pay upfront?
There are.
That they may actually be beloved, true up by the, by next month?
That's possible, but there are some departments, and I know we've discussed it previously, but like elections, their budgeted expenditures or their expenditures exceeded their budget. And it was for those various elections, we, we bill out anything that we can to the other municipalities. But at the end of the year, they're, they're just over in their expenditures. And there are a couple of departments like that.
I was thinking about recreation. Normally, they're not over.
Recreation has been for the past few years, mostly in the, in the part-time temporary employees. They were, you all approved some new positions for them. So that number is actually coming down. And hopefully can come down even further, you know, once those overworked people that Raymond had aren't working all those overtime because now they have, they have help and they have additional people to fill in on the schedules. Yes, ma'am. But that's actually not a bad variance for recreation. They're usually much higher.
Okay, that's how I had, Ms. Chairman.
Now, remind me, once the, you close your books, that's what, that's the expression they use? You're able to true up, you know, with funds that were not spent to compensate for those departments that?
Yes, sir. As part of our, yes, the year-end close, the Georgia Department of Audits allows us to do a budget amendment in the 13th period, which is after the end of June, but prior to us officially closing the books. Yes, so we will spread that out, but we still want to hold the departments that are overaccountable as well.
But you do see that being able to be done without a problem?
Oh, absolutely. Yes, absolutely.
I'm spelling green.
Samantha, would you just, for those in the audience, those that are listening, would you put out the word, what happens to the money that's left from last year's budget that's not spent?
Yeah, something we just said.
That goes into our undesignated, unreserved fund balance to fund additional items that are unanticipated. For instance, Hurricane Helene, we had to front all of that debris removal costs, which was pretty costly, until we can recoup that money from FEMA. So if we had not had undesignated fund balance, then we would have been in a lot worse position than we, than we currently are. So yes, sir, it's, it's not really equivalent to a cash account, but it is a safety net. And it is something we definitely need, you know, with all the unknowns that could happen, unbudgeted.
So if you had to stand up right now and say there's really no wasteful spending?
Oh, absolutely not. Yes, correct.
Excuse me, Ms. Chair.
Just a quick question. And just looking back, I guess, whatever one else is saying. So last year, we were at 5.1, and this year, we're at around 6.1, correct?
Yes.
So on average, what was the, a month? What's the, the number for that?
That really varies based on the point in time in our fiscal year. So when our property taxes are largest source of revenue for general fund, when those are billed and they, and the tax bills go out, those months following where our largest payments come in, we're very flush. And much higher than a five. But then as we dwindle down to our, you know.
Right, right.
The December, January time period.
Right, well, I, I, I guess my question is, I guess, whenever we're saying like six months of undesigned fund balance.
What does that mean?
How much money is average of per month?
Um, so our general fund expenditures, expenditures are averaging about five point five million per month, yes.
That's what, thank you.
Mm-hmm.
Samantha, excuse me. Um, I know we've gotten some of the funding from FEMA, but we're still waiting on approximately how much? You don't have to give me an exact number, but I know there's still, still, we just got a big check the other day, I saw that. So, there's, about how much are we still, a- and I guess?
Ballpark?
Go ahead.
Six hundred thousand or so, yes, sir.
And Commissioner, the point is, we were able to pay that ahead and still be safe with our fund balance.
We do have one of those debris, uh, pickup vendors that is working with us based on the FEMA, but we paid the other one a hundred percent upfront, yes, sir.
We're hanging in there.
We are.
I hope that check will come in fairly soon, y'all.
Hopefully be, before they shut down FEMA.
Yeah. Yeah, okay.
And also FEMA, um, owes us money for the box culvert that, that was fully, well, not fully funded, but that was largely funded. And there's another one point two million that we floated for that project as well.
Come on FEMA before something changes. FEMA money closed tomorrow, we don't know. You may go on, you may proceed, ma'am.
Oh, okay. Uh, continuing on to solid waste. Currently, solid waste is showing through the month of May, um, a net loss of two hundred and forty-three thousand. Uh, cash flow wise, um, this number includes depreciation, and through this month, it's, that cost for the year was three hundred and ninety-seven thousand. So, we are operating at a positive cash flow situation, but, um, accounting standards require us to report depreciation as well. Um, but there are currently no single departments that are exceeding budget for the solid waste fund. Additionally, for our special revenue funds, um, there is one, the victim witness DA, who's slightly over, um, and this is for some travel, some travel costs, uh, but we expect this to be reimbursed uh, for year, before year-end. Um, and also, just as a reminder, uh, when we met for the budget, um, it was determined that the victim witness program, uh, should be combined with the district attorney's office in the general fund. Um, so we make sure that we're recouping all of the costs from the circuit-wide counties. Um, so you will see that, uh, change starting in July, um, but I think it's a better approach for checks and balances. Now, flipping over to the sales tax reports, uh, May was a, was a good month for collections. Sploß, uh, seven, we received one point two million dollars for the month. Uh, we've expended seven, right at seventeen point five million, um, on our sploß projects. And additionally, for T-sploss, we collected one point one three million for the month of May. Um, this brings us to a total T-sploss collection since inception of fifty-four point three million, um, of which we've spent twenty-five point four million on our T-sploss, uh, and road projects. Um, and this concludes my report for May, unless you have any additional questions?
Wasn't the projected collection fifty?
Fifty-four million, yes, sir.
Yes.
And we, we still have a few months to go, so, yes, sir.
Yes, yes, sir. I'm speechless right now, sir.
All good news.
Samantha.
Yes, sir.
Go back to solid waste, I guess that's where it would be at. I know we had an outstanding debt owed to the county. Has that debt been satisfied yet?
Not yet. They, um.
Are they up to date?
No, sir, those are past due amounts, and they're paying twenty-five hundred dollars a month, and it'll probably take thirteen, fourteen additional months to collect in full based on that pay.
But right, but right now, they're behind?
Yes, sir, that's a entirely past due balance, we're no longer, um, accepting trash on, on, on behalf of that.
All right. And the, the new solid waste raise that we set were designed to ensure that there is no deficit?
Oh, yes, sir, yes. Um, with that solid waste study that was performed, yes, sir. But that's a, that's a gradual increase, um, so, but we, yes, we should see, um, this that's starting to turn around, and they should be able to.
But this one should correct itself in thirteen months or so? And then the new raise we set should take care of what's moving forward?
Yes.
Got it.
And hopefully pay back the general fund for the money we've fronted all the years, so, yes, sir.
Anything else for Ms. Samantha? Oh, good news, thank you. Say, say it again, so fifty, where are we now, fifty? The collections?
Fifty-four already.
I'm sorry?
The, the sale tax, fifty-four.
Oh, fifty-four point three million for T-sploss, yes, sir.
Point three.
Yes.
And, and, and the pennies are still coming in?
They're coming.
All right, for September, good job, good job, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Uh, Mr. Long?
You know, wha, while he's getting ready, you know, ladies and gentlemen, we, you know, we have floss and T-sploss in November. I cannot say vote for it, but I do want to take note that it's certainly doing some mighty good work for us. I'm gonna just leave it at that.
Yes, sir, it sure does. Uh, a lot of these rates, the things we've got on my report, we couldn't do without it. All right, so I'll run through a couple of these things pretty quick. On Sunshine Lake Road, um, they're doing, uh, we think we'll be able to do this with a full-depth reclamation, uh, similar to what we're doing on Bacon Town Road, but with a thinner section. Um, our preliminary estimates get us back down closer to the four hundred and eighty thousand dollar range. So, I've already turned, uh, Whittaker laboratory loose on making that design for me. So, as soon as they're finished, we'll get that back out on the streets. Uh, Bacon Town Road, uh, we're gonna have the, uh, pre-construction conference, not next week, but the following week. Uh, that way, they'll be getting started back on that road as soon as we can. Barrington Ferry Roundabout, personally, been taking up a lot of my time trying to get that done. I got some stuff that's due this weekend and by next Friday. So, just, if you see me hibernating, I'm hibernating, working on Barrington Ferry Roundabout. Um, Pickleball Court, looks like the light poles are going in.
Oh, good, good.
So, uh, then we can kind of get moving with that. Uh, the roadway striping project, uh, they did a pre-construction conference for this afternoon. So, that project is getting ready to roll. Um, water system west of the railroad, they're getting ready to start going down McIntosh Lake Road. Biggest thing that they're, uh, waiting on is their subcontractor to show up to start doing all the directional bores we have going underneath, uh, eighty-four, as well as going underneath the canals.
How many customers would we pick up?
We have the potential for ninety, ninety-one customers. So, now, this is not something like the CDBG, where it's mandatory that they're, uh, can come, but we've got ninety-one services set up.
Worked on anything about the fire plugs yet?
No, sir, not yet, I'm, I'm kind of working on that to some extent. I've talked to the fire chief about it, um, he's good with the way we are until we get something worked out. And, um, what I've got to do is get with utilities department to see if they're gonna let me do that. But I need to get through my bores before I really start pushing that button. I don't know, I can, I can hardly hear you.
What about PK and Lane?
PK and Lane, so everything is finally approved. I got a, the approval letter from, uh, DOT for the bore. Well, I was going to Houston this week.
Okay.
Monday or Tuesday, my days are all kind of running together. So, EPD's approved, uh, the bores approved, and so we're ready to put that out to bid. As a matter of fact, I think I gave Michelle Dakes to put it in the paper already, I just don't remember the dates I told her. But we, we've got it going in the paper.
Okay.
You and I still need to get together on why I vote dry, so whenever you get a chance.
Okay.
Give me a shout.
I'm shouting.
When you want to come, you want to come tomorrow?
I could do it in the morning.
All right, come on, I'll be there at office.
Okay.
I may have my door shut and knock.
There we are.
All right, um, I got ahead of myself, Jones Creek Pavilion. Um, so that project's moving along, okay? Uh, they got a couple of trees they got to take out. But we got some changes that, uh, y'all had talked about, and I've got some prices on that I probably need to go over with you, uh, before we start taking any kind of motion, and then, uh, hopefully, we'll bring that back to you guys at the meeting, if that's okay with you.
Okay.
Because some of the prices, I think, are okay, some I don't think are okay. I don't think we're getting the value for our money, so just kind of want to go over, you know, what you like and what you don't like.
Okay.
So, we can decide what to do.
All right.
That way, we can bring it before everybody.
I'm right behind Commissioner Frazier.
All right, um, the next thing is, uh, the acceptance of the roadways of the non, uh, maintained subdivisions. Um, so what we did is, at the meeting, last meeting, kind of came away with, uh, a couple of different takes, and we'll make sure that I got everything right and that we're heading in the right direction. Uh, the first one is, we need to update the ordinances so that the acceptance of the roadways happens at the end of the warranty period, uh, so that you don't get stuck, or we don't get in these awkward, uh, positions that we are now. Um, obviously, that's got to come through the, uh, Liberty Consolidate Planning Commission, and then as a recommendation from their board to you guys. So, uh, we're working on trying to get that prepared until you, as soon as we can. Um, second is, kind of develop some cost estimates in, uh, on some of the subdivisions, and kind of start implementing a plan of how we're gonna do it. So, to date, we've got you three sets of plans on three subdivisions that are kind of our biggest problems, um, that, uh, we think that have, uh, easier ways to be able to accomplish this. Uh, those would be Arcadia subdivision, Happy Land plantation, and the Trail subdivision. Um, I think the right-of-way ownership issue on those can be resolved relatively easily. Now, the, the hardest part's gonna be taking it over and the price that we got to do. So, you look in on my report, you see that there's about five million dollars worth of work to be done.
Four point, four point eight.
Is that it?
Four point eight.
Yes. Well, I was just, I was doing fast, easy math. So, you know, basically, obviously, we're not gonna be able to do that like all in one fell swoop, to go, to go knock these out. So, what I wanted to try to do is make sure we develop a plan, make sure you guys are okay with the direction I'm headed, and then bring back a plan to move forward on these next ones.
Yes, Chairman.
We, you left out three subdivisions.
Yes.
Cross Creek.
Yes.
One on Camp Viken.
That's right.
And Buell.
So, we're working on those, and what I'm trying to make sure of is I know a path to resolve the right-of-way ownership issues. And then, once I get that resolved, I can bring those back to you as well. But I will tell you that, um, the cross, the crossing subdivision is gonna be right at a million dollars. And Buell land is not gonna be nearly that much, but it'll be a couple hundred thousand dollars to get that, because it's a dirt road. So, we'll just bring it back to county standards. But the biggest problem with that's gonna be, you know, we got a bit driveway pipes for everybody. But there's some unclear ownership this way the, the right-of-way goes there. And the other one?
Cross Creek?
Cross Creek, yes.
What about, I mean, if you look at Cross Creek, what, we got to look at the water situation.
Yeah, the drainage is hard. You know, you've got to get rid of the water, and whatever we fix on the roadway, uh, we've got to fix it in such a manner that it tolerates high groundwater. Because that's kind of what causes a lot of problems out there is the high groundwater. I mean, it's, it did remarkably well for the, the length of time that it's been there. Um, and it didn't really start falling apart until we had the freeze, what, five or six years ago, we had the big freeze in January? Um, and that's when it really started falling apart. So, you know, the water gets down in there and creates the cracks, and the more cracks you get, the road fails exponentially faster, so. But yes, no, I, we, we're working on those, and we're trying to make sure I have a, a path forward onto ownership of right-of-way and being able to make that work. So, I don't want to bring something to you that I can't make work yet.
Ms. Chairman?
Yes, ma'am.
I just wanted to make sure, going back, because I know, you know, four point eight million's a lot right now. But if perhaps we could go in there, and, you know, the commissioner of that, that, uh, represents those folks that live on those roads, it's possible we could go ahead, if, if we take them over, he may not be able to bring them up to standard, but if we take them on, we could do some repairs, like, um, like the trails, the big old pothole. We could go, the county could go in there and maybe fix that, fill it in, and just fix it in until, you know, he may, or I may get enough to actually do the upgrade on it.
Yes, ma'am.
You know, I'm not speaking for him himself, but if it was in my district, and if we, we're gonna take it over, I would want, maybe want to go in there, I, we might could do some repairs for a couple hundred thousand versus a million to get it up to the county's standards.
Yes, ma'am, so there are some.
Saying, and then I have another question, go ahead.
I, I think you're exactly right. Um, in some cases, we can do some minor repairs to get it passable.
Right.
For the time being, until we come up with some of the monies. Um, so that's kind of part of the, the development plan to figure out, okay, when are we gonna do it? And then, how are we gonna do it? You know, so, I, I'm not, not sure I'm answering your question, but I'm struggling.
That's, that's my thought, is that we could go in there, even if it's in my district, I would, you know, I, if I had a road like that, I would want you to go in, I want the county to go in there, we take it over, we go in there and, and fix it if we can. But, you know, these are in District One, so that will be up to him.
Yes, Chairman.
The other item is on Arcadia, and I don't, we didn't get minutes from the previous meeting, I think they'll come out.
Thanks, ma'am.
In August. But at, um, the, the commissioners voted to take over that road. Have you been in contact with the owner, with, with the, with the owner of that road?
Yeah, we've talked a little bit.
That y'all been able to get together for us to take that road on?
So, we have not gotten to them to say, here, sign on the dotted line to give us the road yet, because we wanted to get through the meeting with today to make sure that we had the clear path forward, and you knew the dollars were going on doing that, but.
Right.
We can certainly go ahead and get the deed drawn up and do that.
Right, because that's what we voted on.
Okay.
Yes, we did, we voted to take that road on without, um, without the amount, because Commissioner Blunt wanted the amount. But it was, whatever the vote was, forty-two, forty-one, whatever, that the county would maintain that road.
Yeah, and, and I had also heard that in that meeting, that we needed to get the numbers to you first.
Oh, no, that, that was not what we voted on. I don't know what the minutes were going, going to reflect.
I'm good either way.
But we said for you to get with the county attorney and the, and the owner of that road to draw it up, and the county was gonna, to take it over.
I can.
There was no dollar figure.
I can resolve that, so that's not a problem.
You agree?
That's what I remember.
That's, that was my, that was my thought.
Okay, but I, I apologize that I did it that way. I just, I guess I'd heard it a little different, and I do apologize.
I got a question, this is probably gonna be a question for the attorney. Uh, 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 here's a question. If we go in here and take over a subdivision, and it's not completely built out, what's gonna happen when someone else goes in and just keep on building while the county has taken over?
So, um, that's always a, a possibility, that it happens in any road that we've taken over. If, if every house is not finished in there, it would just follow the same procedure that we do now. So, now, likewise, if you've got like a subdivision that's gonna come into, uh, Arcadia Drive, so, you almost need to go ahead and, and get it improved now, and fix it now, before you get into a situation where there's a lot more construction going on at the end, because then you're gonna get into a lot of finger pointing of who did what and fixed what or didn't fix what if we don't draw a line in the sand somewhere before it gets going. Now, we can wait, we can fix parts of it, and then come back and do it later. But just by my experience is, we're doing roads, and if there's another development coming at the end of it, uh, during the course of the construction, you get hit with things that you and I are not thinking about right now that kind of come up and say, well, you said you're gonna do this, or you said you're gonna do that, and let's keep it clear and keep it dry, and say, okay, this is what we're gonna fix, this is what we're gonna do it, and then this is what you're gonna do as a developer.
Oh, Trent, Chairman, what I'm hearing is that we are going to accept all of these subdivisions, not just one. All of them. Right?
Then, can I add some light to this? Uh, upon, upon finding more information versus what we listened to the other night, uh, let's talk about Arcadia subdivision. Uh, let's talk about Arcadia subdivision. The representatives are sitting here, correct? Mr. Ray, Ms. Ray, alright, and you probably have some other developers in it. If I remember right, it's about, you wanted the zoning request for the tail end of a subdivision, a new subdivision coming on. Traffic's going to go through Arcadia. There are problems on Arcadia Drive where these people, residents, new residents can travel. To me, it's almost a, a waste of money to spend the money upfront just yet with all that construction going on. And that's basically the primary road for all the travel to come in and out of, the heavy truck traffic, Mr. Ray?
Yes, sir.
Alright, so where I'm at with this, with a new subdivision being developed, they would be under a two-year warranty once they got their stuff built. As they're nearing completion or right at completion, whether it's two years down the road or three, that would give us the time to raise more money for this. Um, knowing that we're going to have to take over the development that's in play now, Arcadia. We're going to have to do that what we voted on the other night. But I think that we could sit back, that's just my opinion. I think we could sit back and hold on. I don't know whether his new development's going to be a year, two years, three years, whatever it may be. You might can shed some light on that to help us understand this.
So two hundred and thirty-three lots, if they take down fifty lots a year, that's going to take you, what? Five years to get through those, plus another two, another year or so of building. So, you know, then you got, by the time they get through and start, you're, you're pushing six years or better before that subdivision is built out.
That road is tore up all again.
Yeah, and so now.
You give a little timeline on what I've been told, but you're the engineer. I'm listening.
Yeah, and I'm going to tell you what my recommendation is, is if you're going to do it, let's fix it now. Because if we fix it now and we fix it right, it'll handle the load and it'll handle the traffic.
Okay, so we go in now and fix it and fix it right.
We're going to fix it, we're going to fix it right. Because if you don't go ahead and fix it right now, then, then you've got current traffic plus construction traffic. Plus us trying to rebuild the road, all going on at the same time. And then you're going to have all kinds of fingers pointing at you that's, is going to be.
We're just weighing out and making sure we all looking at everything just right.
And I'll be honest with you, every time I've done something like that, it's like no deed goes unpunished. You know, something crops up that you and I are not thinking about right now that just shoots your whole idea in the bud. So I've kind of learned, I've kind of learned is.
You'd rather do the whole thing?
Let it take the load and move on.
That's, you'd rather take the whole load versus like Ms. Thrift said, Commissioner Thrift, that, uh, you want a little bit of patchwork to hold us over. I understand.
Yeah, now, like the tra, like the Trail subdivision, we could go patch that until we get some money. Don't have quite as much traffic. Yeah, I'm not going to have, you stop and think, two hundred and thirty-three lots, that's twenty-three hundred cars a day. Yeah.
But I, I, you're the engineer. I'm listening. I'm, I'm learning all that.
I'm going to do what you guys tell me and want me to do. So I don't want you to think that I'm telling you the wrong thing, but, you know.
Trent, Mr. Chairman, since this is in District One, why don't you and I get together and take a look at it?
Yes, sir.
And we bring it back to this board.
Yes, sir. I'd be glad to do that.
Alright.
But I'll go ahead and get the deed stuff.
Yeah, it's your recommendation, whatever you're going to do. Yeah.
Yeah.
In the meantime, we took that road on. We voted to take that road. We didn't vote on these others, but we voted to take that road.
What I want to hear is that this board of commissioners has pledged and voted and will vote to take care of all subdivisions that's not deeded over to Liberty County.
Not just one. That was my understanding.
Not, not just one. I want to make sure I heard it right.
But we voted specifically for that one on that night.
This is the one that started the conversation.
That's right.
You need to hear it again?
No, no.
It'd be an amen.
Let me say this, Commissioner Gillip, I was talking and begging about the other subdivisions for a long time. A long time. I think everyone up here knows it except for Mr. Blunt. And then the other night, there was a change of venue.
Right.
So if any subdivision should be done first, it should be the Trails. Because that's the one that started all of the headache. Mr. Chairman, you know exactly what I'm talking about.
Because I believe you were going to, you know, possibly if the contractor is still around, that you could get with him, you know, whomever. And they would deed it over to the county rather than have to go through other legal action. And that's why we told you to get with the, the owner of the road, attorney and yourself and work that out on, with the others, Mr. Ray, you know.
And some of the others, it's not quite as clear.
That's right. You're exactly right.
That's why I haven't, that's why I brought the ones I brought to you now is I feel like I got a pretty clear understanding of how I can make that happen.
Will it take some time for you to get the others to this point, you think?
Uh, I'm, I'm almost there.
Well, just bring back a complete package, a presentation involved.
Yeah.
Chairman, that would give myself and.
You're almost there.
Yeah, but what I'm going to do is I'm going to go ahead and bring the ones that I got to you.
And commissioners, what you have to do, what we have to do is to determine the financial part of it. So we're going to divvy this up. However, that, that's going to work. That's, that's where we are with, with the funding part of, of these improvements. We all agree they need to be made and, and you're right, that's a new direction from what had been said from this commission. Um, Commissioner Gillip was very clear the night. I remember that as a.
Yeah, that's what I was getting ready to say. I, I, I think we, we agreed and we're not going to back up from that. We, we agreed that we're going to take them done. I mean, ma, make them all whole. We, that we're going to accept them, they'll be ours and we'll be responsible for it. Then we're going to do that. That's what we said and I, and I think we're going to hold on to that. Now, we didn't talk about priorities. That's something that could be discussed. We didn't listen from one to ten or one to whatever. But, but they're all ours. And where we go first, that, you know, that's another discussion, but we did accept them. But I, I do want to say a little bit, uh, Mr. Chairman, when, um, and I, I can see the gesture of going in there, making some temporary patches. But Trent, I know, as you know, let's take the trails and, and, and there's some holes in there, half the size of this room. And you know from patching roads that the, the base, even if you put, even if it's two million dollars to, to fix it. And you go in there temporarily to make it so people could get, you know, down the road without running into a hole the size of a Buick. That, um, a temporary patch could cost thousands of dollars. But if that base don't hold up and you get traffic beating it out, you get rain and this and that and the other and whatever else is going on in there. Then that ten, fifteen, twenty thousand dollars is just. It's, it's a waste. Now, but you'll have said that and say, well, you know, we can do this one. But, um, I know they tired of running into holes the size of a Buick. But, um, a temporary patch, um, I'm not, I'm not going to sit here and say that, that they should be used to it by now. But, but, uh, to put some money and it don't last but a month.
That's weird.
You, you know, so that, that's something to think about. But you, you would know before we put the first bucket of asphalt down in there, if this one that could probably last.
Yes, sir. Especially like the trails when you have the poor base like that. Make a patch, then you got to sing, and then what happens is the edge of your patch messes up and it just keeps.
Like a spider web.
Like a spider web, yeah. So, but anyhow.
Bring it back, bring the full package back.
Bring it back.
We can bring full package back, but I'll go ahead and bring the ones that I know that have deeds. Go ahead and.
Yes, sir.
But, but, you know, but that's a good point, Commissioner Stevens. I mean, we do need to kind of prioritize them. But, um, I mean, but we have decided and, and we're not going back on that, on that promise. We, we're going to make them ours and, um, we'll make them whole.
Make that work.
Thank you, sir.
Alright, thank you.
Trent.
A sidebar on the outside some.
Mr. Rickerson.
Trent, I got five questions for you, but go ahead.
I'm going to say, man. Good evening. Get us to the good stuff.
Good evening, Chairman Lovett, members of the commission.
Good evening, sir.
We are here tonight to have a public hearing on the updated comprehensive plan for Liberty County.
Folks, chair, take the motion to go into public hearing.
Go move.
Second.
Second. Further discussion, all in favor, show hands. We have a quorum outside. Did you get them all? Ms. Marie, you good? Okay. You may proceed, sir.
I have placed at each one of your desks a copy of the updated draft comprehensive plan. Uh, this plan is intended to replace this plan, which was adopted by you and all the cities of Liberty County back in two thousand sixteen. This has been a very good guide for all the development that's happened during the last ten years. And, uh, so this, what we, what I'm asking you to look at tonight and have a public hearing on is an updated version of that. I've, Chairman Lovett and Joseph know that I've been taking this out around the county this month because I've been bumping into you.
Yes, sir.
As you've been taking out the T-S plots agreement to everybody. So, uh, I've been, uh, my, my goal for the month is to place a hard copy of this in the hands of every local elected official that's going to be voting on, on this. And just for your information, we got eight, uh, we got you in seven cities. There's, there's forty-five elected officials. And in case you've never done that map, I just did that a little while ago. So there's forty-five people who will be voting on this. So I have put a hard copy in every one of their hands. But, uh, for those who are not going to be voting on this, I do have a, uh, there is a copy of this on our website, L C P C dot org in its entirety. And it is actually better, easier to read it online than it is to look at it in paper because you can zoom in on some of these maps. And there's a lot of maps in this, a lot of information in this. So what I'd like to do is just take you through a brief summary of what's included in this and then ask y'all to have a public hearing. And at the conclusion of the public hearing, uh, we'll be, uh, transmitting this to the State Georgia Department of Community Affairs. Because they have to review it before we bring it back to you in September for your final consideration and adoption. So if you'll just allow me to do the summary. Uh, it's just, uh, some of the pictures in the, uh, comprehensive plan from, uh, from the front cover of it. And as I said, this is a joint plan. Uh, this is the fourth comprehensive plan that Liberty County has done since the state started requiring it in nineteen eighty-nine. And every one of those four plans have been a joint plan. So that's to the county and the city's credit that you all worked together and have, uh, continued to do joint plans. So public hearings, uh, there's, there's been a lot of public involvement in this, in the development of this plan. Uh, you all hosted a public hearing in this room on January the eighteenth of two thousand twenty-four. And since that time, we've had a lot of, uh, community planning meetings. You, you all have attended those meetings in your, in your districts and you know that we've had some, uh, some significant public input. Uh, in addition to that, we had other, two other formal hearings. Uh, we had the one, uh, that the Planning Commission had two days ago in this very room. And then, of course, we have the one tonight that's the final required public hearing, formal public hearing, uh, before we send this to the state to, for, for their final review. In addition to the public hearings, we've had a stakeholder committee. Chairman Lovett and, uh, Joseph and some of the other county officials were represented on that stakeholder committee. We met five times during the month of, uh, between December of last year and April of this year over in the multipurpose room. You can see some of the, some of the meetings where we, uh, where we had those stakeholder meetings. In addition to that, we had twelve meetings around the county, uh, beginning in Flemington in February of last year. And concluding in the Sunberry Islands area in January of this year. And these are some of the meetings that you all attended with us. Uh, we, uh, we facilitated all those meetings. You can see some of the photographs that we had from the various meetings. And the map here just shows the, uh, the twelve sub-areas across the geography of, of Liberty County where we met. And this, this, as I said, this, uh, this plan contains a lot of new updated information. I just wanted to kind of call out some of the information that's in there. Uh, I, I think you're aware that Liberty County has finally eclipsed the seventy thousand population mark. And, uh, by the, by the end of this planning period, uh, we're expected to be in the eighty-two thousand. So we're expected to gain another twelve thousand people during the, during the life of this plan. Over on the left-hand side, you can see how that breaks down to each of the cities and, and the unincorporated area. The unincorporated area has twenty-two thousand, three hundred of those seventy thousand current people. Uh, Heinzville is, is of course, as everybody knows, is our largest city at thirty-five thousand, two hundred and eighty-two. And you can see how the other cities shake out in terms of their distribution of the population. In addition to that, it had, this, this, uh, plan contains information on household income, median household income. The blue dotted line across the top is the state median household income is around just under eighty thousand. Uh, Liberty County's median household income, total median household income is sixty thousand. You can see how each of the cities stack up against that. Uh, and you can see that Flemington far exceeds it, Waterville exceeds it some, and then the rest are pretty close to, uh, to that. Except for Midway and Resprill, they're a good bit below the median, uh, income, household income for Liberty County. Uh, chart down to the bottom is just, uh, distribution of employment. Uh, of course, we all know that Fort Stewart is our biggest employer, but, uh, this just shows the non-Fort Stewart, the non-military employment. And as you see there on the top there, educational services, healthcare and social services are the, are the top category. And that includes the school district, the hospital and, uh, some of the other government agencies. That's our largest employer. And housing unit structure, I think, I find this to be a very interesting, uh, interesting graphic in terms of planning. You can see how the different housing structures, uh, uh, break out according to all the cities and the county. You can see that in unincorporated Liberty County, thirty-nine percent of the housing stock is single-family detached housing. And you can see there on the top there that twenty-five percent of the overall housing stock in Liberty County is mobile homes. And the rest of it, there are some apartments and some other types of dwelling there too. You can see, uh, uh, that, that same breakout is available for all the cities as well. In addition to that, uh, this, this plan contains the goals and, and, and policies that, as are, as are required by the, uh, minimum planning standards of the state of Georgia. And it's broken down by economic development, natural and cultural resources, community facilities and services, land use and development, housing. And then finally, it's transportation. So this kind of pulls together all the goals that, uh, that you have in the various topic areas. And I, I would encourage you to look at those as well as the public and, and see the goals that are contained in the plan. In addition to that, uh, one thing that I'm most proud of with this plan is it, it mirrors the new U D O that you adopted two years ago. For the last fifty years, we had a, we had zoning ordinances in place. The county had a zoning ordinance, the city had a zoning ordinance, City of Heinzville. And our smaller municipalities also had ordinances. Uh, beginning in two thousand twenty-three, you all adopted the same unified development ordinance where everybody has the same zoning. And these are the zoning categories. And the one thing that I really like about this new comprehensive plan is it is very closely tied to the U D O, which makes it more useful to us as a planning staff and the planning commission. And you, when you're evaluating, uh, land use, uh, rezoning requests. So this is just a page out of the comprehensive plan on commercial that describes what, uh, the plan envisions for commercial. Kind of gives you a photographic example, but it shows the compatible uses within the commercial zones on the map. So it, uh, it gives much more clear description about what commercial means. And if you look at residential low density, there's other, there's other pages in here that describe the other uses, but I'm just giving the, the commercial and the residential low density as examples. And you can see the, uh, corresponding zoning categories that would be compatible with residential low density. And then there are just some photographic examples. So, uh, this is the big overall composite land use map. This is a future land use pla, plan for Liberty County as reflected in this, in this, uh, comprehensive plan. You can see it's color-coded as, as it was in the previous edition of the plan. You can see that the predominant colors on there are green, which is agricultural forestry, yellow, which is, uh, low-density residential. The brown here is the natural conservation, which is the coast, the coastal areas. And there's also some conservation lands over off of east, uh, off of Fifteenth Street on the west side of town. The other categories, uh, like there's some gray on there, that's the industrial complex around, uh, Riceboro and Midway and, uh, the trade port area. The rest of the other colors, like the reds and the blues are all, um, are all commercial and, uh, more business related. And that, that big, big composite map kind of gives you the picture of, uh, the future land use in a bird's eye view. But there's also, uh, blow-up maps from each of the communities where you can go in. And this is where it really helps to look at it online. You can really zoom in and see what the future land use plan is for every, every acre of land in Liberty County. This, this is just a sample of the one from Riceboro. I like to use it because it, it does show a good mixture of land use. And it's got the industrial complex there, it's got the, uh, low-density residential and the agricultural and, and the conservation, all in one, one blow-up map. So in addition to that, we have character areas. That was in our old two thousand sixteen plan. We carried that forward into this one as well. So we've updated the character areas for the county. This gives you a, a detailed description of what each character area is. There's a character area for the whole Liberty County, uh, in a map form. And then just like with the land use, we show you a, a blow-up of that. So you can, this, this map here is for the Waterville area, but there is a, a blow-up map of the character areas for every area of the county.
Jeff, can you go back one?
Back one, okay.
Please, sir.
For the whole county.
You know, and what I see here is that a lot of the county is still agricultural. Uh, then that brown, of course, as he said, it's in conservation. So, you know, sometimes we think everything's commercial.
Right.
But it's not.
Right.
In Liberty County.
Right. And, and of course, you've got Fort Stewart up here too. So between Fort Stewart and the agricultural forestry and the, the, uh, conservation area out there, you, you really are, are limited in the amount of good, good land that's left. So you have to be very, uh, deliberate in what you allow to develop because you only have a limited amount of land here that's not wet or, or taken in some other use.
Yeah, no more warehouses.
Yeah. There are a lot of warehouses on the ground now. We, we can absorb some of those over the next several years.
Right.
So, uh, the last thing, the last feature here that I called to your attention is the, uh, the five-year work program. This is a required element for every. This is a required element for every city and county in the state of Georgia. The one you've got here is one for Hinesville, there's one for Liberty County in there, there's one for every other city in there as well. We sat with, we sat with Joseph and Joey and the chairman and, and went through the accomplishments from last, from the last five years and checked off the things you got done and the things you're still working on. And then we, we, from them, they, they shared with us the goals over the next five years and we put those in there and those are all incorporated in the plan. So I invite you to look at the ones for the county and the ones for the individual cities as well. They're all in this comprehensive plan. And that's it. I've got, I'd like to take any questions. And Chairman, we have advertised this as a public hearing if anybody wants to give comment.
Did anybody sign up, staff?
Yes, sir, Mr. Ray, but he just walked out.
Oh, Mr. Ray. Did you want to speak, so did you just sign thinking it was a signing sheet or did you want to speak to the comprehensive plan? Good, okay. Thank you, sir.
Mr. Richardson, I'd like to thank you and your team. I've had the opportunity to listen the other night and saw some of this and with the updates and all. You and your team have done an outstanding job.
Thank you.
Thank you. Some good information.
Thank you.
Give me again the timeline.
I've, I've got one more meeting. You're the seventh of, of eight governments. I'm going to Gun Branch on Monday night. And I will complete my tour of Liberty County. And after that, we're working with the CRC. We've got Wincy here. She was the project manager for producing the plan and she did all of them out for us. So I can't say enough of the good things about the work that she's done. But once we, once I'm done delivering this to Gun Branch, then we will transmit it to D C A, the Georgia Department of, of Community Affairs. They will review it and give back their comments. And then we'll be, I'll be bringing it back to you and all the cities in September for a final vote.
So we have that time then to...
You've got two months to, to look at it and you'll, you'll, you'll be, you'll be provided whatever comments D C A gives back on as well.
All right.
Mr. Fraser, you guys up?
Yes, sir. I appreciate it, Mr. Chair. Just a quick question. I was just looking through it real quickly. And one of the questions I was going to have is on education. I, I think, you know, you've been around long enough in this, in this particular field. You know, economic development, education go hand in hand. So I guess when I was looking at this, I think you could go back to, back to, you were saying, the median incomes, right? I don't know what, what page it was in here.
Right there.
So just looking at, at this, so you're telling me that the city of Flemington is the only municipality that is over the Georgia?
The only one that's over the Georgia. Waterville is, is over the, the county and, and they were in disbelief when I presented that to them.
Yeah, me too. Right. But, but, but I, I guess with the city of Hinesville, it's, it's the larger municipality. So, you know, there's a lot of different wages in, in between there. I get that. But also I was looking at, I guess, what is that, two point two with education? And also it's saying that we are below even the region on education. And I'm not talking about just what our school system, because I see that in here as, as well.
Where's that, where's that two point two?
What, what? Uh, page seven on the, oh, no.
In the plan, not, not in, not in my presentation.
Okay.
Yeah, I'm, I'm fantastic, sorry. So e, even looking at that, it's saying that we are, are below even the coastal region in education and, and from eighteen and over.
That's right.
I think it said, what are we? What did it say? It, it says something about, I think, what, thirty percent of, from eighteen and over have a high school diploma?
R G D.
Right.
Yeah.
So what I'm getting at, when, when are we looking at this plan? Because I, I see it even have our population going up to north of eighty-two thousand by twenty fifty-five. I get it, but is that data just directly on us or is it looking at, at the region? Because, because what I'm seeing is if, if we stay right here, I know Chatham County and especially, I mean, Richmond Hill, come on. And I mean, I've, I've been seeing it for thirteen years up here. If we don't focus on education and economic development, we're going to be left behind. Richmond Hill is building a roughly a hundred and seventy-five million dollar high school. And there, so now we're having an issue with, with retention, with getting teachers here. I know for a fact there's teachers who are moving in, you know, their spouse might be in the military. They're not even looking at our, our school system. So I, I love the plan. I, I love the, the data and everything, but we have to come together, you know? Not just with us, with all the municipalities, board of education. We all have to come and, and do some type of rebranding because the perception is they're going to Richmond Hill. They're, they're going to Poole. Again, I graduated in ninety-nine. I could not tell you where Poole, Georgia was. I had zero reasons to go to Poole, Georgia, not one. And we're talking about a matter of twenty-five years what they have became. And we could do it too, but I think we just need to really focus on, on, like you said, we only have a certain amount of land. So I think we, we need to definitely stick with, with the plan, the comprehensive plan with, with that and focus on this education. I mean, from, from pre-K all the way to, to the adults. Even if we, you know, Ms. Chair, and I, I know you sit on the board with Savannah Tech, but just, just getting, you know, our, our younger adults to understand the importance of education. Because the more educated you get, that's how you get to, to that blue line. There is, is no other way around it unless, unless you are a genius or you, you know, you played a lot of... And, and, and I think the thing is, a lot of people think you have to go off to college and, you know, become a lawyer. But more importantly, but more importantly, especially with the, with the influx of, of new housing and everything. I, I tell people all the time, man, call a plumber at, at noon and call him at midnight and see the difference. So Ms. Chair, like I said, if, if we could start working a lot closer with Savannah Tech to, to get them to understand the importance of like this, just trades. Yeah. So that's my spiel with that. But yeah, we need to focus on this education though. Thank you.
Thank you. I, I, I'm hearing that more and more in our community. So I think it's, of course, you know, our, our school system leads the way when it comes to Savannah Tech. We're constantly working on our clothes. I, I do, I am proud to say unless it changed in the last school system, we had more students from Liberty County in dual enrollment and receiving T C Cs or credits than any county that Savannah Tech serves. So I know that students are taking advantage of that. Now, they are in students of new programs where you can do a pathway. You can decide, okay, I'm not headed to Georgia State. So at tenth grade, you, you choose your pro, chosen pathway and you graduate with your certificate and whatever trade it is. So all that's on the drawing board.
Okay.
We just don't get to hear about it enough, but as we march toward the county planning workshop, that's some good discussion to have about how everybody takes part in the education system, not just the school board, but we all partners because, right, it all does feed into employment. And I, I will close with this because employers look at these kind of numbers, these kind of stats. So we want to ensure that we're doing our best to give our children the best opportunity. I do know there's some bright young people. I see the mother of one over there who, who has a son at Georgia Tech who's doing very well. Liberty County grads. So not that the kids don't graduate and not have the credentials or, or the ability to move on, but there are some stats that are out there that are hurting us when people pull those stats up that, that gives them a general view of who we are, but that's not the total picture of who we are. So I think we all agree we can work together as a unit to, to improve. And you're right, we need to make that median income improvement in Liberty County. So, and one of them trying to diversify the economy with the new industry and only industry that pays thirty dollars an hour. Whether, you know, those kind of things will help to improve our numbers. So we got two months?
Yep, two months.
All right. By that time, we will have some more information. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Now, there was no one who, other than Mr. Ray, right?
Right.
Okay.
Chairman, if I could, I'd like to introduce our new planner, Caitlin Esters. She's been with us for a couple of weeks and she came to us from North Georgia. She's a University of Georgia graduate and she's, she's had several years of experience with ecology consulting. So we're glad to have her on board.
Welcome, L L, good to have you.
Good to have you.
Thank you.
Jeff, I would say, I, I'm proud of you. How did U G A grad, man?
Yeah.
You be converted yet?
Yeah.
Thank you. Chair, do you have a motion to come out of public hearing back in the regular session?
Some of them, sure.
Second, all in favor, show your hands, please. All right, back in regular session, thank you. Ms. Leah, the mother of the Georgia, U G A, I said Georgia Tech, didn't I?
Yeah, I was gonna fix it when I got up here and not correct you.
That's the other school, isn't it?
He, he was accepted to Georgia Tech. He decided to become a Bulldog and he'll graduate, actually, three years is what he'll spend at U G A and he'll have his masters. And that's thanks to the school system and all the credits that he got doing dual enrollment. So did a great job. Good evening, Mr. Chairman and Commissioners, before you today to do our bi-annual update. So rolling through that, so this will be January through July or June. We did attend Tourism Day at the Capitol, which hasn't happened since COVID. So we are excited to see it happen again. And that's when tourism professionals from around the state go and they present the big check to the governor saying how much tourism does impact the state's second-largest industry next to agriculture. We also helped host leadership Southeast Georgia when they were in town, serving as kind of a welcoming committee and we made gift bags for them, went out to Dorchester Shooting Preserve, had breakfast with them, got to say a few words about Liberty County and our history. We were also excited to be invited to help with a regional chamber collaborative meeting. It's Chamber and Development Authority. Us and the Liberty County Development Authority co-hosted a lunch at Dorchester Academy for folks from all over the region. I think this was back in February, March. I honestly can't even remember. The months start blending together. So we did a whole menu based on the history of Dorchester. So if you've ever been to the museum, you've seen the menu that they have based off the civil rights movement. We kind of did the same thing and had show enough smoking, good barbecue come and cater that. Small World Festival held here in downtown Hinesville is an event that we're proud to help with every year. This was our second year helping with that event and planning already has started for next year. Our Y'all Tourism Day, so we're always excited to host the students. This Tourism Day was held in March. And I'm sorry, Mr. Gilliard, I know you have to hear my presentation twice.
No, I, I, I didn't hear it over there. I was, I was texting.
Okay. Makes me feel better.
He was distracted.
Yeah. I'm trying to remember all the things, make sure I don't miss anything. We're always excited to have the students. One of the most impactful things to me is they, a lot of them don't know that Liberty County has a coast. They don't know that we have water.
They don't.
And they're always fascinated by the trees and the moss. So things that we take for granted and that we think are just everyday, because we see them every day, they don't. So we're, we're always honored to be able to provide that education and glimpse into another side of Liberty County. We also participate in the Economic Development for Educators Program, which is in conjunction with the Liberty College and Career Academy and the Liberty County Development Authority. There's a cohort of about thirty educators that we combine. We do three different sessions where we take them to industries and show them what is available for students to work in here. We lead the creative career session. So what's, what jobs are available for students who might not want to go to college, but who have some kind of creative bent? They want to write, they want to do graphic design, they want to draw. What can we offer here? So we lead teachers throughout downtown Hinesville and other areas to show them some of those opportunities. And it might just be being an entrepreneur, which I don't think anybody goes to school and says, I want to be an entrepreneur. That, we don't even know what that means. So helping our educators understand that so that they can better explain it to our students. Our bi-monthly spouse tours continue, so we start those always in February of every year. We do skip the summer months because it's a little warm. We do have one in August and it's going to be a little warm. And then we'll go through December. We are hosting a senior spouse tour for new senior spouses in October as well. So we'll have two in October. Always excited to show them various parts of the county. On the left, there's the Historic Baptismal Trail. We, this one we went and visited, Keep Liberty Beautiful. On the right is, I think it's K Creek, it might be the Baptismal Trail, Baptismal. And then the library here downtown, again, K L B with the World's Artist Crayons. So we kind of take them a little bit everywhere. There's no itinerary from one month to the next that's the same. So they can come on multiple tours and get to see lots of different things. We get that question a lot, can I just go on one and I've seen the whole county? You can't. There's no way you can see everything in this county in one day. It's not possible. We do booths at various locations. So Fort Stewart did open back up their newcomers fairs first time again since COVID. They opened last fall. We do pay for the opportunity to go on to base and welcome new soldiers and families. And we will be there tomorrow. Lily over there will be out there with some volunteers. So we're there to talk to them, get email addresses, phone numbers, tell them about the county. Some of my favorites are that we don't know how to drive here. Get that from a lot of soldiers and I, I always remind them that we're not all from here anymore. So it's all of us collectively driving and traffic, of course, is heavy. And then a, a young man who wanted to know where to whitewater raft in Liberty County. So explained where we were in the state topography-wise and there's not a lot of whitewater rafting, but where he could kayak. We, we got to that. Travel and Tourism Week was big for us, so that is during the month of May. Ebony over there, Creative and Content Coordinator, created these really neat boxes, travel kits that folks could win on our social media or go through our newsletter and sign up for. She mailed them all over the country to various people who requested them. And then we also had folks come to the Bacon Frasier House and get their travel kits. We also visited every single hotel in Liberty County to thank not just the owners of the hotels, but also the staff. A lot of times those people don't get the thanks, they don't get the, they do a good job or any of those kind of things. So we did little baskets for all the staff members too, to tell them that we appreciate the job that they do. And we had a booth in the, at the farmer's market and T-shirts. This young lady on the far right, she's a soldier. She was at our office at seven A M. to get her travel kit. We don't get there at seven A M. So she was sitting in her car waiting for us when we got there. She kind of startled me because she rang the doorbell. These are just some of the comments that we got on Facebook. You can see the one in the middle, because I can't see the rest of those from here. It's Phoenix City, Alabama. So that, so that's somebody who requested one of our travel kits. So folks were just really excited to get them. We can't wait to wear our T-shirts, we want to come visit, those kind of things. So that's what we're supposed to do. Always we're promoting the places and the, the taste. So that is our job, most of the photography and video that you see on any of our social media, digital billboards. So that's all us, we do all of that. We did take some new photos in local parks. We wanted to do a blog on where to do yoga in Liberty County. So Ebony went out, took some pictures, used some local young ladies to get them in those photos. And you can see on the left, those just stats from one Facebook post about baldinos and how well organically that post did. So we didn't pay any money to boost that post or make it do well, it just did well. And again, that's a credit to these ladies. They do a great job of making sure we all look good. We, again, all the photos, we take all of those. We've staged a lot of photo shoots in the last several months at various locations around the county. We got some new kayaking photos thanks to our U G A summer interns. They had a terrible time kayaking in Sunbury. They, they really don't like working with us. Park photos, third ID museum, lot of food photos. Food really gets people motivated to go places. Pictures, more pictures, people fishing on the pier in Sunbury, which the use there, I would love to hear Raymond Gross talk about, but every time I go out there, it is packed. Even during the weekdays, it is packed with people out there fishing, crabbing, doing all the things. Lots of winners. So when we do those, those newcomers booths on, on, sorry, on Fort Stewart, we always have a winner of some type of prize, but they're required to come to our office to get their prize. A lot of times none of these folks haven't come into town, so they don't know where to go. So we enjoy getting to show them around the Bacon Frasier House and give them their prizes. Historic Preservation Month, we were also out cleaning those signs and that's my U G A student there cleaning a sign. So we did thirty markers all around the county. Most of the ones we do are out in the county. I think we only do two that are actually in Hinesville City Limits. Our billboard's on ninety-five, except forty-two and thirty-nine. The art on those is set to change in September after we have another photo shoot in August. And then the number slide is just the same one I put in here every time, so you can see where we are and where we stack up. And then open to any questions that you might have.
Question for Ms. Poole.
No, I talk fast, I apologize.
Talk fast, but you talk clearly, that's good. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Can I impose on you all to hang around just for this last presentation? Will your time permit? This thing is fitting and proper that we just shared this. Ladies and gentlemen, at this time, we will have the Liberty County Historical Society to come to present to us. As you all know, we've been talking sometime about the Jones Creek Park. We've been calling it, it's the King Taylor, but we found that we never officially voted, you know? I presented on that some time ago, but our records indicate that we did not take an official vote. We take that tonight as well as we want to officially name the bypass that's going through our county. So the Liberty County Historical Society has agreed to kind of lead the way. And I didn't know they were coming in costume.
I was about to say.
It's our costume.
Well, you look good, you look good.
I'm representing a eighteenth.
I'm representing a eighteenth-century insurance salesman. Had to have insurance.
He's always selling something. Lieutenant Colonel John McIntosh, Commander of Fort Morse. When the British asked for surrender of the post, I replied with, "We are in the battle of America's independence and disdain to remain neuter. So, therefore, receive this iconic reply, come and take it." So, that is the term we use today for Fort Morse. In November of this year, we're having our annual Come and Take It with the Sons of the American Revolution. I invite everyone to come out in November, it'll be the twenty-second on a Saturday. Thank you for your time.
That was the invite, please, sir, if you will.
I'm representing the First Minister of the Midway Congregational Church, John Osgood. He's a graduate, I believe, of Harvard and came down to be the First Minister and died in the, I'll have my notes here in front of me, but anyhow, in the early eighteen hundreds. But he was the First Minister. Now, the church there was congregational, but it was really Presbyterian, was the actual practice of the church and everything. And I'm sorry for my too short of socks.
Thank you.
If y'all were taking pictures, thank you.
Oh, freedom, oh, freedom, oh, freedom over me. And before I be a slave, I'll be buried in my grave and go home to my Lord and be free. I represent Suzie King Taylor, a freedom seeker who was thirteen years old when she escaped slavery here in Liberty County on the Isle of Wight.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Originally, I had written on this piece of paper, "Good afternoon", but knowing that after six o'clock in the evening, it is evening rather than afternoon. You have witnessed, you have just witnessed a production of reenactment presented by members of the Liberty County Historical Society and their altered ego. Let me introduce them and their roles as members of the Historical Society for this county. First, Hermena Glass Hill, who is our president, representing Suzie King Taylor, a part of the Civil War. Next, Randy Branch, Vice President, representing Reverend John Osgood, a part of the Revolutionary War. And then Phil Odom, Treasurer, Lieutenant Colonel John McIntosh, Revolutionary War. Absent is Cecil Greenwell, who is our Communication Director. He is creating memories up in Madonna, Georgia, Madonna, Georgia, I believe, babysitting grandchildren. So, we do not, we are happy that he is able to do something presently as opposed to reflecting on so much of the past. I am Rose Stevens Mullis and I serve as the Society's Secretary and I'm acting as myself. A daily requirement of aging is to check four things, person, place, time, and situation. So, I shy away from alter egos. I told you who we are, persons, place. We are here at the Liberty County Courthouse in Heinzville, Georgia. Place, time. It is July seventeenth and it is 6:23 in the afternoon. And finally, we are situation. We are here attending the Liberty County Commissioners Board Meeting to present a dual recommendation. As a member of, as members of the Historical Society, we have a responsibility to preserve and accurately present the history and legacy of this county that was founded on liberty, independence, and freedom. The members of this board unanimously agreed to recommend the renaming of the Heinzville Bypass to Independence Parkway. Secondly, the members of this board unanimously agreed to recommend the renaming of the Jones Creek Park as the Suzie King Taylor Freedom Park at Jones Creek. Thank you for considering our request and thank you for having us.
Resolution for Suzie King Taylor Park, Mr. Mosley?
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, a resolution renaming Jones Creek Park to the Suzie King Taylor Freedom Park at Jones Creek. That whereas, the story of Suzie King Taylor, a native daughter of Liberty County, has received local and national attention in recent years. And whereas, young Suzie was taught to read and write at Bucket School for six years as she sojourned to Savannah with her grandmother. And where she escaped slavery in eighteen sixty-two during the Civil War from a native Liberty County Isle of Wight community. And where Suzie King Taylor would marry Edward King of the first all-black US Army Regiment, the first South Carolina volunteer, thirty-third US Colored Troops, and served as a nurse, laundress, and teacher amongst her husband troops. And whereas, later in life, Suzie King Taylor would become an author, a Reconstruction-era entrepreneur, veteran's advocate, humanitarian, illustrating the potential and possibilities of a devoutly inspired and determined individual. And whereas, the Liberty County Historical Society recognizes the iconic nature of such an outstanding native of this county and enjoys the Board of Commissioners of Liberty County to memorialize her name for generations to come, now therefore be it resolved by the Board of Commissioners of Liberty County at a duly assembled meeting July the seventeenth, twenty-twenty-five in Heinzville, Georgia as follows. Section one, that the Jones Creek Park be renamed to the Suzie King Taylor Freedom Park at Jones Creek. Section two, that Liberty County Board of Commissioners continue to seek funding from all available resources to further enhance all future phases to include a nature trail and fishing pier and other educational amenities to capitalize on its potential to serve as one of Liberty County's premier parks and local and national historical sites which attract visitors far and near. Section three, that this resolution shall be and remain in full force and effect from and after the date of adoption, passed and adopted the seventeenth day of July, twenty-twenty-five, Board of Commissioners of Liberty County, Georgia, by Donald L. Lovett, Chairman of the Board, and attest Joseph M. Mosley, County Administrator.
Commissioner Stevens?
Mr. Chair, the Board members, I make a recommendation that we rename Jones Creek Park in honor of Susan King Taylor and call Susan King Taylor Freedom Park.
That can, Mr. Chair. Does the motion in the second that we follow the, we honor the recommendation of the Liberty County Historical Society to rename the Jones Creek Park to the Suzie King Taylor Freedom Park. Is there any discussion? All in favor, show your hands, please. Pass you now, please. Resolution for the Heinzville Bypass renaming, Mr. Chair.
Chairman, members of the board, resolution naming the Heinzville Bypass Project to the Independence Parkway. That whereas, the Heinzville Bypass Project has been discussed, designed, and finally funded over thirty-plus years. And whereas, the Heinzville Bypass Project is finally under construction and will relieve and divert truck and vehicle traffic off US eighty-four. And whereas, the Heinzville Bypass Project is the beginning effort of local leaders to lobby for and help design additional right-of-way to develop a more complete bypass. And whereas, the Liberty County Historical Society, in conjunction with the Liberty County Board of Commissioners, are desirous or recommend a name of the bypass project that encompasses the aspirational term of liberty. And now therefore be it resolved by the Board of Commissioners, Liberty County, at a duly assembled meeting held on July the seventeenth, twenty-twenty-five, in Heinzville, Georgia as follows. Section one, that the Heinzville Bypass be named as Independence Parkway. Two, that the County Administrator be authorized to submit all official notification to the Georgia Department of Transportation District Five Office. And section three, that this resolution shall be and remain in full force and effect after the date of adoption, passed and adopted the seventeenth day of July, twenty-twenty-five, Board of Commissioners, Liberty County, Georgia, by Donald L. Lovett, Chairman of the Board, attest Joseph M. Mosley, County Administrator.
Commissioner.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion, we honor the recommendation of the Historical Society in naming the Heinzville Bypass to the Independence Parkway.
Yes, second to the motion. Motion, secondly, rename the Heinzville Bypass to Independence Parkway to reflect Liberty County's history and its place in an American independence, as has been emphasized by this auspicious group that stands before us. Any further discussion? All in favor, show your hands, please. The motion passes unanimously. Your work has been done. Your work has been recognized. Now, we got to take a codec moment since y'all are dressed.
Hey, Phil. Phil. I asked Mr. Odom a question. Hey, hey, we do it now. Phil, does that jacket come in a four-to-four XL?
This is a fifty-two.
Oh, it's too big.
These historical companies, they'll make whatever you want.
I wanted that one down.
Mr. Mosley.
Yes, sir.
They're asking that we do need to come down there or have them come in?
I think. That outfit is better seen on the floor.
You're going down.
Sorry. Going down.
Trying to get my feet or my legs.
Or even those off that part. Those look like those, the socks got up.
It's heavy, I can imagine.
Who shot him to do a banana limo?
Almost sounds like a little drum roll.
Just three to make it, y'all.
All right, I'm going to count to three, all right? Everybody on three, one, two, three. All right? This is for commissioners, ladies.
I can't believe I did that.
Thank you, everybody, so much for participating, you know? You may not know it or not, the other day, Officer Guy from HPD said, "In Liberty County, history is made every day." So, today you all have to make history and I appreciate supporting the leadership in that for our community. Thank you so much. Board reappointment.
Mr. Chair, I know this is a shock, but I guess I'm one of the somebody speaking today on top of that. The only reason is because he's a little honored to weather. So, Mr. Chair, for the board appointment for the CADA board, we have Mr. James E. Rogers for reappointment to that particular board, sir.
Chairman, I make a motion, we accept the recommendation.
Yes, motion second, we accept Mr. James Rogers. For the CADA board, excuse me. Any further discussion? All in favor, show your hand, please.
What's CADA, what is that, Mr. Chair?
Coastal area finance.
Right, it's the finance.
James Rogers in finances.
C A D D A.
Coastal area development.
Coastal area district development authority.
Yeah. If you want to do a project, you have to go through those.
Okay.
For the financing piece.
Okay, thank you, thank you.
Good question. Minister report, Mr. Mosley.
Here. We are, we had discussion early about talking about the T-Splash and Chairman and I and Commissioner Stevens have joined us on last, on this past Monday with the city of Midway. So, we've all, as of today, all the cities except for Gum Branch has signed off on the IGA and we'll be going over there on Monday to make a presentation. At the day, the city of Heinzville also passed their IGA for T-Splash as well as the call for election.
Commissioner Smith, can you make the Gum Branch meeting, what time is it?
I will not.
You will not meet, okay.
But they don't start till what, seven? I might.
I think they said six-thirty.
Six-thirty?
I believe that's what I heard, but I'll check, we'll check.
I think they did change it, I think they changed.
Gum Branch.
I think it is, they used to meet at seven.
If you can, if you can.
Thank you.
And we also be bringing before this August body in the August the fifth meeting for consideration. And also, we have met for our first FLOF, which is the floating local homestead exemption. And we've met with the city of Heinzville one time and we'll meet again. And we watched materials with ACCG and written materials, so we're ready to meet with them again to negotiate the disbursement on that. Our goal is to bring it before this body for consideration in our August twenty-first meeting. Impact fee ordinance update, our consultant Paige Hadley met with the Technical Adviser Committee. She's going to meet with them again on Thursday of next week. And we'll be bringing before this body, working with our county attorney Keller Davis on reviewing ordinance, that's going to be a part of the process. And we are scheduled to have two public hearings, one will be here on the fifth and the next one will be on the twenty-first for your consideration. Personnel, we've interviewed our four candidates for Assistant County Administrator and we made an offer and we're waiting for that candidate to consider the offer. You'll notice I put on your page, on your desk, a chairman who's been working with the person who's been doing logo, you'll see this is what we started out and you'll see four designs in terms of signage for the logo. We'd love for you to look at them and give us some input on that as we try to finalize that project. And then lastly, we want to share with you is Clint and staff has been working with us and administration to do a refreshment on our website and they want to do an unveiling of that at our Tuesday, August the fifth meeting. So, we'll show you what the changes we made. We really have tried to do some things to make it more user-friendly. For instance, one of the things that we did is we worked with the company for open records to make it easier for people to do open records. And the second thing that we did is with the new software is made it more compatible for people with disabilities to be able to navigate the website. So, those are some of the changes we made and as well as a new color scheme that we done for the website. I think you'll find it pleasing. That concludes it, sir.
We're looking at the logos and I think we can wrap this up. The difference is the fonts, right?
Yes, sir.
That's what I.
That's the only difference. So, which one do we like the best, commissions? We can go ahead and, we don't need to take this home and.
Well, option one, that looks like a two, so.
Say it again?
Option one.
Oh, the L looks like a two. Yeah.
I like three.
You like three? I think I like three. Three and four is my favorite, too. Which is Gilligan and Blunt, which one, between three and four?
Yeah, I like three and four, but I think, I think three, Liberty has spelled out a little, you know, that cursive on four is kind of jumbled a little bit, it's a lot clearer on three.
All right, number three it is. Option three, thank you, I knew we could do it.
But, but, don't take that, don't take that, I was joking. No, no, I like three better.
I was serious, three.
I meant to say to, Commissioner Walton has to be excused, but he and I had a previous conversation about the renaming and he was, he was on board with our choices. So, just let that be known, that he supported our efforts to do the renaming and naming. Anything else, Mr. Mosley?
That's it, sir.
Let's see, communication came about the legislature, the conference that's held at Checo, where we had to have a voting delegate.
Yes, sir.
I know sometimes, Mr. Brown has done it, sometimes Commissioner Stevens have done it, so they, they're asking us for a name to, to serve as a delegate.
And, and Chairman, I believe Commissioner Blunt is scheduled to be there, so one of those two.
He, he's got to be there for school.
So, so one of those two candidates, Chair, I think I got a, a schedule then.
Commissioner Stevens, you want to do it again? Can Stevens, are you going to be there?
Think I'm going too bad, let you know.
Oh, yeah, I think.
I'm, I'm going.
I'm supposed to be there, I, I know that.
You need to be there.
I just thought about that.
That's his heart. Okay.
I'll be, I'll be there for the conference.
But it, but it's only core classes, right? It's only core classes?
No specialty. Right. All right, so Commissioner Stevens, you, you'll say, all right.
Mr. Chairman, the Gum Branch City Council is at six thirty on Monday.
Something else, sir? I see your face.
So I was, so we want to go with?
Commissioner Stevens, he'll say.
Okay, I'll complete it and send it in.
Okay.
I'll get that in done tomorrow.
And you're going to be on, you're going to be on a little R and R sometime soon?
Yes, sir. Next week for a couple of days.
Been working real hard, Joe, he's been working real hard.
No, no. I gave him some kind of salute, I, I want that back, Joey. I gave him a salute on that uh pay loss of the thing. I, I, I want it, I want it back, man, come on. I didn't know, I thought that was encouragement, I know for you to take off.
Freezer and loose Frager is still online to go out. Road will be shut down next, next week, twenty-third.
Yes, uh, Trent shared with us that they, they pushed it back even further.
Did they? Long as the.
For one fifty?
Long as the sign is going to be up and all that, so people will know.
And we've already uh let W T O C and W S A V and, and got it on our Facebook page.
Oh, I shared it on, on my social media.
That's, might be a conflict.
That's not a good sign, you got to postpone the closing. I can see a opening.
All right, all for the good of the order, Chairman, turn the motion to Chair in a second.
I had it to my sixth meeting.